Gusto ko lang sabihin in one straight statement. Either you resolve the issue sa impas ninyo dyan and pass the budget legally and constitutionally. Pag hindi ninyo ginawa, ako ang gagawa para sa inyo. Hindi ako nananakot. Wala akong ambisyon manakot. Wala rin akong ambisyon na tatagal dito sa puistong putang inanto. Na puro problema. Wala akong ano, wala akong haharin. Basta sinasabi ko lang, if you do not solve the problem, then I will solve the problem for you.
Thank you for the short video. Now, may we have Deputy Speaker Kong El Rey Villapertre for giving a, for an update regarding gab.
Anyway, um, reading from uh, the newspaper reports, the issue ones of uh, our president for a call for a special session. It's very clear. The message is very clear. Yung special session is clearly for the deliberation and approval of the budget. Uh, budget first, budget is a priority, politics later. And uh, we in the leadership of the house are strongly committed in passing uh, on third reading, yung uh, 2021 gab. Uh, pinasapun ang kongreso ang bayanihan one, uh, in record time, bayanihan two. And we feel that this budget is the be, the, the best stimulus for our people. It will enable the government for uh, funds for response and recovery sa COVID. It will stimulate the economy. So, fully committed po ang leadership, uh, and I'm sure members of Congress is fully committed in passing this measure at the earliest possible time. And just to give you an update, the past few days, today even Sunday, we are continuously working with our colleagues in the house. Uh, nagkasamit po sila ng mga proposals for amendments. Uh, nagkasamit po sila ng mga uh, magagandang idea, proposals for uh, na possible po na makatulong sa ating gobyerno in response to the COVID. So tuloy-tuloy po ang uh, ang house leadership, ang small committee, ang appropriations committee in working closely with our colleagues. Uh, kung paano mapaganda po ang uh, budget, so we can pass a people's budget. So 'yan po ang updates namin, and on Monday, we are clearly also meeting again uh, to really uh, uh, madetermine talaga kung ano po ang mga provisions na magpapaganda po ng ating budget. So prior to the uh, special session opening on Tuesday, uh, today, tomorrow, uh, tuloy-tuloy po ang pagtrabaho ng house leadership uh, with regard to the budgets. Again, we would like to assure our colleagues and the public uh, na talagang priority po ngayon ay uh, budget. At uh, kung meron man mga, naririnig tayong mga uh, balita regarding politics and other issues, uh, palagay ko naman isasangtabi po 'yan ng uh, members of Congress. Talagang malinaw naman talaga instruction ng presidente, budget muna.
Okay, thank you for this message Deputy Speaker El Rey. Now, can we have a message from Deputy Speaker Butch Pichai?
Naka-mute Butch, Butch, naka-mute ka.
Hi, good afternoon. Just like uh, what DS uh, Villapertre said, it is really important that we pass the budget for 2021 on third reading before we go on recess. And that is the only reason why uh, the president called for the special session because uh, we are not living in normal times. Uh, we have to address the, the problem of uh, COVID. Itong pandemic na ito, it's worldwide. But yet, um, uh, we cannot just take it for granted. Uh, we need to uh, pump prime the economy dahil yung ating ekonomiya ay medyo affected. And um, I hope that we will not be distracted by um, intramurals just like what the president said. I don't uh, the president said, "I don't give a damn kung ano 'yung bangayan ninyo sa kongreso, pero ang importante maipasa natin 'yung budget." So, um, we should pass it in three days. So Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. Uh, we have to pass it dahil uh, mahalaga po 'yan para sa ating mga kababayan. Ang titignan natin 'yung kapakanan ng ating mga kababayan, hindi 'yung ating mga personal na ambisyon. Thank you.
Thank you for the message Deputy Speaker Pichai. Now, may we have Minority Leader Benya Bante for his short message.
Uh, magandang, magandang hapon po. The minority bloc is one with the majority. Na ang talagang uh, priority dito, 'yung budget. And uh, uh, we do not want uh, any political squabbling to be uh, involved in this. Uh, tinanggap namin with uh, a welcome development ang uh, pag uh, sabi ng pangulo na makakaroon tayo ng special session para po ma-approve na 'yung budget. Sa amin po sa minority, kailangan-kailangan na po ito ng taong bayan. Sa amin po sa minority, eh taong bayan muna bago ang politiko. Kaya whatever it might be, uh, utalang majority naman ang talagang uh, mag-uusap niyan. Kami mga taga-minority ay uh, parang passive observer lamang kami. Pero we would like to emphasize, ito muna ang budget po asikasaway natin. Unang-una, 'yan po ang nais ng pangulo. Pangalawa, 'yan po ang nais ng taong bayan. Pangatlo, 'yan po ang nais ng leadership ng kongreso. At kami pong minority bloc is one in uh, unity para po sa ating leadership na maipasa po ang budget na ito ngayon pong special season. Kaya hiniling ko po sa ating mga kasama, isang tabi po muna 'yung anumang uh, anumang nais nila, no? At ating pag-usapan po dito ang budget. Ito po ay para sa bayan, para po sa Pilipino. Maraming salamat po.
Thank you for the message Minority Leader Benya Bante. Now, may we have Kong El Pedro Barzaga for his short message.
Magandang, maganda nga po ang sa inyong lahat. Malinaw na malinaw ang diretiban ng ating pangulo na kaya tayo nagkaroon ng special session ay para ipagpatuloy ang deliberation sa ating budget. At ito ay maipasa sa lalong mabilis na panon. Ang aming partido, the National Unity Party, asahan nyo na tutulong para maipasa ng mabilis at ng mayos ang budget natin sa darating na toon. Maraming-maraming salamat sa inyong lahat.
Thank you Kong Barzaga. Now, may we have Kong Egay Arise for his short message.
Magandang hapon po sa inyong lahat. Ang uh, partido liberal po, whether meron po kaming mga miyembro na nasa minority, at meron din akong po na nasa majority. Pareho po kaming sumusuporta na itong uh, special session na ito, kailangan na po nating tapusin ang ating uh, national budget para po sa kapikinabahan ng ating mga mamamayang Pilipino na tumaranas po ng uh, lubhang kahirapan dahil, dahil dito sa pandemic. At nakita niyo po ngayon, uh, nandito ako sa asuluxulukan ng kalokohan, medyo malakasangulan. At palagay ko po, marami na namang mga bakyo tayo kakaharapin, marami na namang paksubo. Kaya kailangan po talaga na uh, wala na muna tayong pag-usapan iba, hindi ang national budget aprubahan na po natin. Salamat po.
Thank you Kong Arista for your message. Now, may we call on Anak Kalusugan Partilis Mike Defensor for his short message.
Hi. Good afternoon. The statements of my other colleagues, I'd like to say good afternoon to Minority Leader Abante, Congressman Egay, uh, Deputy Speaker Pichai, uh, Congressman Barzaga, and Deputy Speaker El Rey. Uh, I hope I didn't miss anyone, pero 'yun po, I understand the discussion is uh, focused on what to do in the coming days, and I agree with the statement of Congressman Arise. I didn't hear the others. But I'm sure the thrust, la, 'yung lahat ng statements na sinasabi natin ngayon is talagang unahin muna 'yung budget, no? Yung politika, uh, iba 'yan, ibang usapan 'yan. Kailangan tayong magtrabaho, kailangan ayusin natin 'yung pondong na kinakarap natin para sa ating mga pangangailangan, palakasin ang ating ekonomiya, at mga pangangailang pangkalusugan. Uh, ever since the start of the budget, ako naka-focus talaga sa Department of Health, uh, sa Phil Health Budget, sa, in particular, 'yung, of course, 'yung Health Facilities Enhancement Program. At kailangan pa rin ayusin itong budget na'to. Uh, dapat gagawin namin ito sa small committee, but I guess we will have to approve it now, no? Sa, sa pag-uusap dito sa diskusyon namin sa session. So 'yun lang din, I join the others nun sa kanlan panawagan. Trabaho muna tayo, 'yung politika, madali naman 'yun eh. Uh, ang kawawa dito ang taong bayan. Kaya ang punto ng ating bansa, unahin natin dahil ito mahalaga sa ating mga kababayan. Maraming salamat.
Thank you Kong Defensor. Now, may we call on Sagipartilis Representative Roda, Rodante Marcoletta.
Ms. May, uh, I think si Kong Marcoletta had technical difficulties. Wala siya ngayon sa session. Nagpapiyata siya.
Okay sir. Now, um, now, we would like to open the floor for questions. May we call on GMA 7 for your questions?
Hi, good afternoon po. This is Ma'v Gonzalez from GMA 7. Can you hear me ma'am?
Go ahead Ma', we can hear you, go ahead.
Hi sir, sir, ngayon lang po, naglabas po ng statement si Majority Leader Romualdes, saying na after the passage on third and final reading of the budget, ay um, susunod daw po sa gentleman's agreement, si Speaker Kaitano. What does he mean by this? Does he mean bababa sa pwesto, magbubutuhan? Ano po ang ibig sabihin itong magko-comply sa gentleman's agreement? Salamat po. Would any from the majority know po what he meant by that? After your caucus?
Um, Ma', ako kasi ang point ko lang, uh, let's approve the budget. If anyone wants to invoke uh, leadership change, uh, so-called agreement, or any other matter, uh, that, that should be secondary to the budget. So, uh, I think let's approve the budget first. And uh, as they say, uh, let's talk about uh, anything and everything after the budget is passed, but kasi, if we comment on this now, we will, we might be distracted again from uh, the issue at hand. So I think, uh, Ma', I think as the, as soon as the budget is approved, uh, anything and everything can be raised on the floor. But again, we uh, appeal to our colleagues that uh, let's just focus on the budget in the next uh, few days. Uh, meaning uh, talagang ano, supporting the heed of our president and our people on the need of the budget.
Ako Ma', just in addition, uh, mga usapang to, uh, I agree with everyone, budget muna.
Mapasa natin itong 2021 budget on third and final reading. But sir, ano po 'yung assurance natin dun sa mga, siguro mga miyembro ng kabilang grupo na maririnig po sila, given na meron pong mga lumubas na nagkaroon daw ng mute ng Mike? Meron daw pong mga ganong issue, sir, that they will be heard on the floor, sorry to ask this po, salamat.
Ma', I just want, I just wanted to add, no? Uh, number one, uh, focus tayo sa budget. Number two, as early as now, pwede na sila magpalista, if they want to interpolate on the budget. Uh, number three, any election of the speaker would require ano? Uh, kailangan talaga i-vote, kung sino man 'yan. I cannot speak for the speaker. I cannot speak for Majority Leader Romualdes as to the agreement or kung ano 'yung steps, no, after that. But I can speak for myself and the whole Congress. Kailangan magkaroon ng butuhan, kung sino ang upong speaker.
Um, if I may, uh, thi, this special session is called specifically to approve the budget. For the hasty approval of the budget. So, I think we should not talk about politics. Maliwanak naman 'yung sabi ng ating pangulo. Let us set aside politics first. Unahin natin 'yung taong bayan. So kahit namang kayo sa meeting dyan, I think let, let us just focus. Do not distract the congressmen with regards to the uh, speakership, no? Unahin natin 'yung budget, kasi mahalaga po ito sa ating bansa. So, ang special session, I repeat, was called by the president specifically to approve the budget. So, walang usapang uh, pamolitika dyan. Thank you.
Salamat po.
Thank you for the question, Ms. Ma'v Gonzalez from GMA 7. Now, may we have question from Mr. Daniel Manalastas from PTB4.
Hello, good afternoon. Hello. Good afternoon, sir.
Daniel, nagbe-breakout. Question, question ko lang, sir, ano, uh, tingin niyo po ba sapat 'yung days na binigay ni pangulo? Kasi parang may managsabi para, ayan. Okay po? Yeah, we can hear you. Uh, question ko lang po, sir, uh, tingin niyo po ba sapat 'yung, ano, 'yung days na? Yung tanong ni Daniel, uh, medyo na po tol, no? But his question eh, kung sapat ang uh, three days, I think more than enough na 'yan to approve the budget on third reading. That's more than enough uh, to approve. So, uh, I don't see any reason uh, or any circumstance I can see that made delay po 'yan. We are very sure and confident that within the next uh, three to five days, uh, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, actually three session days, maaproba na po 'yan. Kasi wala namang member of the majority would dare uh, delay the budget, di ba po? Uh, I think uh, everyone from the majority, from both caps, uh, are one in uh, their desire to heed the call of the president, the heed of the call of the people, to approve the budget on time in an expeditious manner.
Okay. Thank you for the questions, Mr. Daniel Manal, Manalastas. Now, may we have Kathleen Jean Farbest from Rajopilipinas. Ms. Kathleen. Okay, now may we proceed to Ms. Lu, Luis Calderon from CNN Philippines.
Hi, good afternoon, uh, ma'am and uh, y'all the representatives. Um, yeah, I just follow questions regarding the passage of the budget in three days. Congressman Villia Fuerte has said that three days would be more than enough to approve the budget on third reading. My clarification would be, um, so do we proceed to third reading when you resume session on Tuesday? Because I understand last week, um, the uh, the, the bill has been approved already on second reading. So do we proceed right away to third reading for plenary? Or do we revert to second reading uh, to reopen the floor for debates and uh, introduce amendments? Thanks very much.
Ma', I cannot preempt what will happen on uh, Tuesday, no? Because that's uh, that's the decision for the majority. However, uh, the call of the president is to pass it uh, in a expeditious manner. So, if you revert it back, uh, that will delay. So that's contrary to the wish of the president, that's contrary to the uh, clamber of the people to have a people's budget passed as soon as possible. I think whoever would want to do, whoever will delay this budget, kailangan managot sa tao, at managot sa ating presidente. So, I don't think uh, made delay po 'yan uh, for more than three days po.
Any more questions from the media?
Uh, 'yun po lang 'yung binanggit ni DSL Rey Villia Fuerte. Kasi bottom line naman sa amin, di ba? Uh, nung una nagkaguluto, ito is being explained that we'd wait on third and final reading, and then uh, we go through the small committee. On the first day of resumption, papasok na namin 'yung budget. Ngayon ang mangyari, uh, we will go on a third and final read. Uh, as to the process, kung mag-o-open pa sila ng mga amendments, or uh, how they will treat this, uh, bahala na, basta ang bottom line is we have it approved on third and final reading before we end. And then we still go through the committee amendments. Kasi ang hirap nung, you asked about the amendments, individual amendments. Uh, precisely that's why the small committee is, was, was being uh, instituted. At nangyari pa'to, nung pang uh, ninth, tenth congress. I was part of the small committee on the tenth. I was part of the small committee on the eleventh. Kasi nga naman, sa laki ng kongreso, and you have individual amendments, lahat kakausapin mo, napakahirap. But bottom line, matapos namin nung third and final reading, at magawa ng small committee kaagad, ang trabaho niya para mapa-stop 'yung budget. As uh, stated uh, by my colleagues, DSL Rey, ang pangulo, kailangan ng tao to, kailangan itong guming kaagad. So that is the direction. Yung mga proseso niya, let's see, or now we will go about it. But we all agree, we have to submit the budget ASAP.
And uh, if I may add lang, kasi ano eh, uh, importante talaga 'yung budget eh. Unfortunately, leader, you know, from the other camp talaga, hindi sila sumusunod sa presidente. They're, they're peddling fake news by uh, sending text messages na may makaka-leadership change rao sa Monday. Na ang session naman is uh, on the thirteenth, Monday is the twelve. So, uh, just to clarify, you know, I'm sure the media has heard about this. May mga nagka-text na be there on Monday for a speaker leadership change na, na kontrary naman 'yan sa kagustuhan ng pangulo, at kung ano 'yan, against the public sentiments 'yan. So, just to clarify, uh, we hope that uh, you know, everyone uh, should just uh, concentrate on the budget, saka na muna 'yung politika. Uh, di ba po?
Sir, okay, okay lang po magpabal, ma'am. From GMA po.
Sige sir, go, ay sige ma'am, go po.
Sige po. Um, uh, to our representatives, last question na lang po. Meron pong kumakalat ngayon na picture ni Kong Velasco with uh, Davao City Mayor Sara Duterte. And meron pong allegations na, may mga rumors po na umikot na nagtatawag na rao si Kong Sara, ay si Mayor Sara sa mga congressman para um, mga lampag ng suporta para kay Kong Velasco. Have any of you received any call or message from the presidential daughter? Or are you aware na meron pong ganitong umikot, particularly po sa social media? Salamat po.
Uh, on my part, um, I have not, nobody called me. And um, alam nyo, uh, itong speakership, ay kailangan talaga ibuboto ka ng members ng kongress. Meaning to say, um, you, you have to show leadership. Hindi po pwede 'yung uh, by proxy. And um, nakita naman siguro, uh, nakita naman 'yun, that nag-offer ng resignation because uh, the part of their, their uh, agreement, that is only their agreement, huh? Uh, the, the whole congress, the whole house was not involved in that uh, agreement. So the agreement among them is that um, Speaker Kaitano will, will resign on uh, on October, whatever is the date. And I think he was gentleman enough to submit his resignation, which was rejected by the house in plenary. Eh, 'yun lang eh, that means uh, talagang nirerespeto si speaker, uh, at uh, nireject 'yung kanyang uh, and, you know, any, anytime naman, anytime during the three years term namin, anybody can just stand up and uh, if you're not happy with the, the leadership, or you were not happy with the speaker, anyone can stand up and uh, make a motion to vacate uh, the seat, or all seats vacant. And uh, simple majority lang 'yan. Simple majority, eyes and nose na nga lang 'yan eh. And um, uh, I guess uh, uh, 'yung mga kumakalat na balita, I'm, I'm not aware of that because uh, nobody has called me and uh, uh, I think that will again distract the members of Congress from uh, concentrating and focusing on the passage of um, the budget. That will do a lot of the service to the Filipino people.
Uh, Ma', Ma', if I may add, no? Kasi, we were thinking of just uh, talking about the budget now, no? But since you mentioned about some uh, new social media posts and all, siguro ano, it's also good that the public should see, ano ba 'yung ginagawa ng other camp? Um, they're sending text messages such as this. Can you show uh, can you show ano, the text message? If you will look at this, oh, this came from the one of the supporters of uh, the Velasco camp, si Congresswoman Christine Mihan. Uh, if you will look, meron silang meeting on Sunday. Uh, then, on October 12, malinaw naman, nakita mo, Monday morning, House of Representatives, plenary, leadership change. So it's good that the public uh, knows this, no? Number one, there is no session on Monday. The president called for a special session on October 13, not Monday. So, this is disobeying the president. They want to have a plenary session, an illegal session on Monday for the simple purpose of leadership change. Eh, ang utos ng pangulo eh, budget muna, saka na muna 'yung politika o leadership change. So, makikita mo, uh, this, this will totally disrupt uh, whatever focus we have on Tuesday. Then here comes uh, Mikey Romero also pushing uh, for uh, another leadership change. Kung titignan mo dito, the Duterte family stand uh, is quoting the, the family and all. Uh, I think it's unfair also to the family who was, was already stated that uh, you know, they wa, they just want to the budget pass. So, uh, I suggest that if ever they want to push for a leadership change, uh, they do this anytime after the budget has been passed. So I think, you know, the, the public should know, uh, sino talaga ang sincere, excuse me, in passing the budget and taking consideration the people first as against uh, the other camp who is thinking really of politics uh, first. Uh, so nakita naman 'yun, uh, kami lahat focus sa budget, and uh, sila po ay focus sa leadership change. So, uh, and, and this will result to ano, uh, a problem.
It will result to the budget.
This will result in the delay of the budget, as Deputy Speaker Butch says. Because ang intention na nga ni speaker, kaya nga ni, nag-suspend na siya para wala ng gulo at i-approve na lang sa sixteen, no? Uh, ngayon, uh, nag-call ang special session. Yeah, we agree with the president, and we will support his uh, his objective, naipasa na eh. Makikita niyo po, uh, these are the two strongest supporters of uh, Lord Velasco na rallying uh, congressman na on Monday to attend and to have leadership change. So, ano po 'yan, that's a prelude that they're saying, uh, guguluhin ba nila sa Tuesday ang session? Uh, will they uh, what, uh, will they invoke uh, leadership change on Tuesday, which I think is is not in tune with the president's call? Uh, they can do whatever they want, uh, but uh, sila po ang lumalabag sa kagustuhan ng pangulo, at dapat managot po sila sa taong bayan kung madelay po ang budget.
Okay.
Oh, thank you po for that. National Unity Party is stick to the spirit, to the meaning, and to the importance of Presidential decree 1027. And that is to open the deliberation on the budget and to pass it in the soonest possible time for the benefit of our people. So based on that 1027, palagay ko, hindi na muna dapat pag-usapan rito ang politika eh. Taposin na natin muna. Kasi kung pag-usapan na naman ang politika, magkakaroon tayo ng sagotang bawat isa, then, again, malilimutan na naman ang pag-uusap ng pinakamahalagang batas na dapat gawin na kongreso, and that is uh, the budget for the year 2021.
Ma', 'yung uh, your uh, Mayor Sara with uh, with uh, Congressman Lord. So, I'm, I'm calling on Congressman Lord and all his followers. Whatever, kung ano man 'yung clout, kung ano man 'yung impluwensya meron sila, gamitin nila ngayon para sa budget. No? Kasi, 'yan ang importante naming gagawin. Hindi 'yun para sa leadership. Mas maganda pa nga siguro sa kanya, mapapaganda pa 'yung kanyang disposisyon. Kung ang liderato niya, gagamitin niya sa budget, at kung ano 'yung hinihiling ng pangulo, at anong kinakailangan ng bayan. Pero, para gamitin sa politika, 'yun ang panawagan ko, wag naman sana. Kung ano 'yung lakas, kung ano 'yung meron siyang impluwensya, kung ano 'yung kanyang uh, na grupo, gamitin natin lahat to para ayusin ang ating budget.
Salamat po. Thank you. Now, may we have-
Yeah, I'll add to that.
Yeah, I add to that. Yeah, I add to that. Ah, any call for ah, any call, ano mang panawagan na hindi patungkol sa budget? Eh ano po ito, counterproductive to sa agenda ng pangulo at sa agenda ng mamamayang Pilipino na maaprubahan muna 'yung budget. Kung ano man 'yan, after na, na-aprobahan na, pwede namin pag-usapan kahit ano. Pero ngayon, budget muna. Kakapagka-iba ho ang panawagan, aba ang kinokotrap po nila dyan, ay ang pangulo at 'yung kapakanan ng mamamayang Pilipino.
Now may we, okay na. Now may we have Mr. Christian Manio of DCRH News for your question.
Sir Christian Manio.
Kong, good afternoon po. Ah sir, um, kanina Oriental Mindora Representative Doilyat John said, and I quote. Mayor Sara Duterte has endorsed Kong Lord Velasco as the next speaker of the House of Representatives anytime this week. But without inter- ah interruption on the budget deliberation. Any comments on this, especially the majority?
Definitely, um, definitely there will be a disruption in the budget. Ah because ah, a, a new speaker ah will definitely reorganize. Papalitan na naman 'yung ah, 'yung chairman ng apro. So, ah, it will really be a big disservice and besides, that will be out of order. Because ah, this special session was called for particularly to deliberate the budget, not speakership change. So, um, imposibling mangyari po 'yan. Ah because ah, the presiding officer can just say, "You're out of order," will not recognize that motion. And you cannot have a charter, ah I mean a speakership, a leadership change. If it is not, if it does not pass through the regular, to ah, to, in plenary. Meaning to say, kailangan, it should be an act of the house. Kaya imposible po 'yan, 'yung sinasabi ni Doi na walang disruption, may disruption po 'yan. Because um, it will be two camps, no? Mag-aaway ang dalawang campo. So I hope that they will not do that because it is a big disservice. Hindi lang ito sa panawagan ng ating pangulo kung hindi sa taong bayan. Nasa pandemic tayo, iniisip nila ah leadership change pa rin. Normally, like in war, you don't even think of ah leadership change. Unahin muna natin 'yung kapakanan ng ating bansa, ng ating bayan, ng ating mga kababayan. Marami pong naghihirap dahil maraming kumpanya nag-sara at ah kailangan nila ng trabaho. So, the earlier, ah the earliest, in the earliest way that we can pass the budget. Matutulungan po natin ang ating mga kababayan. Kaya, I'm appealing to Doi to please refrain from talking about politics. If, as representative of your people, you should think first of the, the welfare of your people rather than the welfare of per- ah personal ambitions. Thank you.
Thank you. May we call on Mr. Vincent Arbaleada from UNTV?
Saka, excuse me, excuse me. Siguro dapat iclarify din natin kung, hey Mayor Sara, kung spokesperson niyo na si Congressman Liatson.
Okay, Mr. Arbaleada, your question please.
Good afternoon, Kong. Um, concerning po sa budget at sa special session. Some lawmakers are suggesting to open the plenary hall to members of congress following the mandate of the president to pass the budget. So as to allow lawmakers to meaningfully participate in the budget preparation, but that health protocols must be observed. Ah, posible po ba ito?
Um, I think that the president ah just wanted to make sure that ah, the bu- the budget will be passed in accordance with the constitution. Ah, in other words, ah walang railroad. So, ang importante dyan siguro is the transmittal of the budget to the senate. Ah, which will ah, ah take probably a few days to approve it on third reading. Ah, since it is a certified bill, ah mahaba nga lang 'yung ah GAA. Ah, ipi-print 'yan eh, mahaba 'yan, it will take a few days. Kung, kung isang bill lang 'yan, na-certified, sandali lang 'yan iprint. So, noted for the requirement of ah three days upon receipt of the printed, ano, printed bill. Um, palagay ko naman, 'yun lang ang isang requirement na kailangan ng ating mga senador. Na kailangan na maibigay na sa kanila 'yan, 'yung ah ating ah final version, which is voted upon on third reading. So, since um, we have voted on it on second reading. Ah, I don't think um, it will take us a long time to approve it on third reading. So 'yun lang naman ang requirement, I think, if I'm, I'm, if I could read the, the mind of the president. Na kailangan, ipasa natin on third reading.
If I may add no, what we will pass for sure reassure the public is ano, legal within the internal rules of the house and constitutionally sound po 'yan. Ah, ano lang naman 'yan simple, first and second reading should be on separate days. Second and third reading should be on separate days. However, ah this one, certified, that's urgent. So this can be approved at any time. Ah, requirement of printing will be ah fulfilled. So, ano po 'yan, what we can assure everyone is, we will pass a budget that is constitutionally sound, legal, and within the internal rules of the house.
Thanks po.
Thank you. Yes. Now, may we, may we call again, Mr. Daniel Manalastas from PTB four for his additional question?
Kong, good afternoon po le. Ah, tanong po lang po, no? Ah, 'yung po bang ano, i-i-withdraw 'yung motion nun, kasi di ba, in-approved niyo na sa second reading. So, bali, i-i-withdraw 'yun, babalik natin sa deliberations, ganun po ba 'yung mga nangyayari?
Actually, we are already on second reading, so siguro ah, we will move forward from there. Ah, if ever somebody ah moves for that, that has to be tackled and deliberated upon and ruled upon, no? But ah, we cannot preempt what will happen at this point. Basta ang overriding principle, fast-track na approval, in a transparent, legal, constitutionally sound manner. So 'yan ang guiding principle ng lahat.
Ah, hirap Daniel, Daniel kasi magpredict noong kunyari, may mag-motion. Sabi nila, or si Elray, no, would be in the podium and then someone would ask, pwede ba ako magtanong? Ah, aside shed, hindi naman to ano eh, it's a deliberative body. Kumbaga, kahit sino pwedeng tumayo, pwedeng magsalita, pero I agree with all my colleagues, kay DSL Ray, ang bottom line, matapos namin to. Ah, whatever would be the discussion, the process, basta kami tapos, delivered, constitutionally, legally done, okay tayo dyan.
Thank you. Now may we have Mr. MJ Mondejar of Sunshine Media International.
Good afternoon po, your honors. Basing po, basing po sa statement ni Congressman ah Villa Fuerte and ni Congressman Butch Pichai. It seems na parang lumalabas, if you're going to interpret it. Walang kakayahan si Congressman Lord Velasco to lead, if magkakaroon po ng leadership change, to lead the passage of the twenty twenty-one budget. Your comments on that po, your honors?
Um, I did not say walang kakayahan, no? Lahat naman 'yan ay may kakayahan, but it will delay. It will delay the budget because ah, who knows, ah papalitan 'yung chairman ng ah appropriation. Pagkatapos eh, maraming babaguhin, siyempre, kanya-kanyang ano 'yan eh, kanya-kanyang style. So definitely, ah, madidelay po 'yan, madidelay. But um, we did not say na walang kakayahan because ah, actually qualification naman eh. If you're a member of congress eh, you can be speaker of the house.
Hey Congressman Elray po, sir, ano po 'yung comment po niyo doon?
Well MJ, ano ah, tina mo 'yung nangyari last sa congress, ang ganun ng leadership change prior to the budget. And ah, unfortunately, na-delay. Eto, kung magpapalit ka sa third reading, eh, you know, not, not to be negative. But definitely ah, it will disrupt the budget and it will delay the budget. Ah, e- even ah, hindi, kahit na ano ah, even if there's no change, just the call itself is a disruption. The call for a leadership change is a delay. It will create instability, it will create confusion. So if there's confusion, disruption, definitely delay 'yan. Again, dapat talaga, ah, I appeal to our colleagues, put the budget first as a priority. Ngayon, kung gusto nila leadership change, pagkatapos ng budget. Ah, ano naman 'yan eh, anybody can call for a leadership change at any time eh.
At any time.
Anytime, kahit wala kang supporter, kahit mag-isa ka lang, pwede mong ano 'yan, pwede mo rin 'yan.
Anytime. And ah, ang leadership change, kailangan may vacancy. Ah, the speaker has already res- ah offered to resign, but it was rejected. So that will, you know, ah, to create a vacancy, the speaker has to resign. But um, because um, we are focused on the, on the, what do you call this, on the budget. Then I don't think ah, it will, it will be a great service if the speaker will resign. It will be a great disservice if he is going to resign, but the bud- budget will definitely be delayed.
Ako MJ, simple lang 'yung sagot ko dyan, ang sabi ng pangulo. Ayusin natin 'yung ah budget natin, nagagalit siya dahil kailangan to ng taong bayan. Kailangan sa ekonomiya, kailangan sa kalusugan, kailangan nating kinakaharap. So 'yun lang, 'yun lang sinusunod ko dyan. Tama naman siya eh, ayusin natin 'yung budget sa lalo madaling panahon.
Saka MJ, just to clarify, the speaker has already stated publicly. If Lord does the numbers, may signature siya, pakita niya and the speaker will go. Ah, without, and we don't need to convince him. Ah, this talk of speakership change, ah, sana, kung gusto nilang, walang problema, di pakita na lang niya 'yung numero. And ah, you know, the speaker will deal with it as per his ah public statement. Ah, pakita mo sa akin ng numero and ah he will accept. Ngayon, kung wala kang numero, ang sabi po niya, "Let's work together to approve the budget."
Any more questions from the media?
Sir, speaking po of numbers, ah, ilan na po, nasa ilan na.
Sir MJ.
Di MJ, siguro naputol ka, no? But 'yung last count kasi, ah, two hundred five signed the manifesto in support of the speaker. They have full trust and confidence in him. Hundred eighty-four ah sign that he should not resign, ah, voted that he should not resign. So, more or less, these are the numbers that are public. Ah, kita naman ng tao, kung sino 'yun, sino po merma. This was released in the media. So, ah, you know, until that is ah disputed, until a new manifesto or a call ah is ah, ah shown. That, that stands, ah, that, that, those numbers stand, di ba, MJ?
Nawala na po yata, sir MJ. Now may we call in again, Ms. Lois Calderon of CNN Philippines?
Thanks very much for the opportunity. Um, again Congressman, um, ah, my question. Um, there's ah, the statement of ah House Majority Leader Martin Romualdes saying the term sharing agreement between Speaker Alan Peter Kaitano and Parinuque Representative Lord Alan Velasco will be honored after the approval of the proposed twenty twenty-one budget on third and final reading on October sixteen. Um, sir, I understand that ah, Romualdes is from La Casa CMD. Now, would his ah, this call, this statement actually have any bearing at all considering that he's ah from La Casa CMD?
Sorry, ah, Lois, I'm also from the, I'm affiliated with the La Casa. Ah, andito pala si Congressman Pichai.
We have not, um, we ha- we haven't talked about that, no? I, I don't know about that statement because ah, ah, this is the first time I heard about it. But um, I think um, ah, Speaker Alan Kaitano already honored the, the gentleman's agreement. Um, but it was rejected by the house with one hundred eighty-five, one hundred eighty-five congressmen voting against his resignation. So, um, as far as um, Speaker Kaitano is concerned, the agreement was honored. But, I, you know, what they should have done was, they had an agreement. Then they should have brought it to the plenary that this is an agreement. But it was only among themselves. You have to remember that the position of the speaker is not appointed, it is elected by the members of congress. So if they had an agreement with gentleman agreement among themselves, then they should have brought it in the house in plenary. So that ah, we could have acted on that, then it would have bound all members of congress. Pero, since it was not brought to the house in plenary to approve that agreement. Then, members are not bound by that agreement. That's why when he offered to resign, it was rejected.
So ah, as follow up question if I may, Congressman Pichai. Ah, the, the one that is binding is the one that congress agreed in plenary. So are you saying, sir, that the gentleman's agreement is not binding for congress even if it's brokered by the president?
Well, the president merely brokered it between the two. So the ones who had the gentleman agreement are the two. And Speaker Alan Kaitano honored it by offering to resign last time, I was not around. Ah, and it was not, actually it was rejected by one hundred eighty-five members of the house. So, I, I think um, as far as Speaker Kaitano is concerned, he honored that commitment. But since we were not bound by that gentleman agreement, then ah, it was rejected. And I think dapat, from that point on, it, the issue should have been laid to rest. Tapos na 'yun na 'yan.
If I may add no, if I may add, dapat whoever wants to be speaker should lay out to the, ano, to the, to their colleagues and their peers. Anong plano mo, di ba? With all due respect, you cannot just say, "Oh, I, I will be speaker because we formed an agreement." Ah, sa akin lang, ano, sana ah, the members of congress are listening, ah, what we have to offer ah in terms of the budget. Ah, we want to learn, hear from Lord Velasco, ah, his intention regarding the budget. How he, what are his ah institutional amendments? How can he make it a more responsive people's budget? So 'yun lang ang, ano, 'yan ang importante. But again, ah, was like to reiterate, no? Ah, kami, we are all in one in ah fast-tracking the approval of the budget in a transparent, constitutionally sound manner. Et kung sino manggulo dyan, sila po, kung sino manggulo sa deliberation ng budget at mag-disrupt 'yan. Sila po ang sumusuway sa presidente. Sila po ang ah, sumusuway sa kagustuhan ng taong bayan. So 'yan lang ang gusto ko reiterate. In the next few days, ah, the people, the public, the media, even the president will see. Who he, who he really follow his, he, his call, who is eh, ano, ah responsive to the needs of the people. Ah, 'yan ang ano, importanteng batay ng media. Sino manggugulo, sino ang susunod?
And by, by the way, ah, since um, ah, that, that agreement was only between the two of them, brokered by the president. If there is a vacancy as far as speakership is concerned, then there are other candidates. I mean, ah, no, no one can prevent someone from nominating somebody to, to, to run for speaker if there is a vacancy. So, ah, it, it is not a title given to Lord by members of the house. It's a fluid. Anyone can, can stand up and ah nominate somebody else aside from Lord.
Butch Pichai can be a speaker also, why not?
Luis, ah, I read the statement of Majority Leader Romualdes. Ang basic naman na sinasabi niya, di ba, 'yung proclamation ten twenty-seven is for the budget. So 'yun ang gawin natin, ah, wag nating ayus- 'yung term sharing sabi niya will be respected. But in this particular session, the proclamation ay para dito to sa budget. At ito 'yung tapus- ay, tapusin natin. Kausap daw din niya si Executive Secretary Midaldea at 'yun din 'yung kanilang pinakaisan. So I think consistent naman 'yung statement ni Madjo, Martin Romualdes.
That clarifies, it's clarified na 'yan.
Okay, now may we call on Mr. Christian Manio of DCRH for his additional question?
Kong's follow-up lang dun sa ah statement ni Madjo, kasi ang sabi niya dito, um. As assured by House Majority Leader, no, um, the gentleman's agreement will be honored after the approval of the national budget. Just in case sa magkakaroon ulit ng butohan, are you going to vote um, and elect Kong Velasco based on the agreement? um, and elect Kong Velasco based on the agreement?
Again?
Well, as assured by Madjo na gentleman's agreement will be honored after the approval of the budget. So kung magkakaroon ulit ng butohan, are you going to elect Kong Velasco based on the agreement na brokered by the president?
We, we are not, most of the members of Congress are not privy to that agreement. That agreement was between them. So as I said earlier, bakit ah, may titulog ba si Lord Velasco? Nasiya talaga magiging sunod na speaker? You know, someone will just stand up and nominate somebody else. Like ah, maybe I will stand up and nominate Mike Defensor to be speaker.
I think bottom line what Congressman Deputy Speaker Pichai is saying is, whoever wants to be speaker, there should be a vacancy. And when there's a vacancy, if ever the, the body approves a vacancy, ah, the nomination is open for everyone. That, that's what Deputy Speaker Pichai is saying.
Ah, palagay ko, ah, before we talk of ah, ah, speakership, dapat siguro, probahan muna natin 'yung budget, tapos November 16, anybody can, ah, can move for a, for an election, open a speaker. Di magbutohan kami, kung sino gusto nung nakakarami, di siya ang speaker. Pero ngayon, tapusin muna natin 'yung agenda ni Pangulo, saka 'yung agenda ng mga tao, magkakaroon tayo ng budget. Huwag na muna natin pag-usapan 'yung mga speaker, speakership, kasi nakakagulo lang 'yan eh, nakakagulo lang sa budget.
I agree with Congressman Irisi, budget muna tayo, politika later. At ako nag-aappeal, sana if ever may gusto manggulo, ah huwag na muna nilang manggulo. For the sake of ah, our people, the request of the president, COVID ngayon, san tabi muna natin 'yan, ah ayusin muna natin budget.
Any more questions from the media? I think there's no more question. Now may we, now, now may we ask the Kongs for their final message?
Welcome eh, on behalf of the Nationalista Party, 50-strong Nationalista Party, we have a full trust and confidence with the speaker under his leadership. Ah, we have full trust and confidence ah under the leadership of Speaker Alan that he will steer the early passage of the budget. Ah, and we hope that in appeal to ah, members, na huwag na nilang guluhin po ang procedure, isang tabi muna nila ang mga ah gusto nilang panggugulo, ah gawin na lang 'yan after the budget. Ah, budget first, people first, politics later. That's all I can say. Maraming salamat po.
On behalf of La Casi, um, maliwanag po 'yung ah panawagan ng ating pangulo na kailangan talagang ipasan natin 'yung budget sa lalong madaling panahon. So let us not be distracted by personal ambitions. Unahin na muna natin 'yung budget, saka na 'yung ah, poli- eh, you know, anytime within your term, pwede ka namang tumayo at ah, ideklary 'yung seat ng, lahat nga ng seats vacant, eh pwede eh. Hindi lang ah seat ng speaker. So kalimutan muna natin 'yan, let's focus, if you really love this country and our people, ah, san tabi muna natin 'yan, 'yun naman panawagan ng ating pangulo, isang tabi muna natin 'tong mga leadership, mga speakership, unahin na muna natin 'yung budget, kasi 'yung budget ay para sa taong bayan. Thank you.
Marami na ako nakausap sa mga party list groups and also sa mga district congressmen. In fact, I'm in touch with some of them now. At 'yun din ang agreement nila na unahin na muna nga ang pondo nung ating ah bansa ah, sa gitna nung pandemya pinagdadaanan natin. Kailangan natin ng mga programang pangekonomiya, ah programang intrasaktura, 'yung ating mga paaralan, 'yung ating mga ospital, at ito 'yung dapat nating madaliin. Ito rin siguro 'yung naging batayan ng ating pangulo nung magsalita siya na sinasabi niya, ah, tapusin 'yun na tumpondong to, dahil itumpondong to para sa bayan, hindi para to sa Kongreso, hindi to para sa senado o sa pangulo, kundi dun sa ating mga kababayan. Na dapat bigyan natin ang importansya, bigyan natin ang pangunahing pagtingin dito sa ah, nangyayaring problema at pandemya na pinagdadaanan natin. Kaya po, ako naniniwala naman at nananawagan din ako sa kabilang campo na may panahon naman dyan para sa politika. May panahon para isagawa natin 'yung mga papapalit na gusto nila o 'yung sinasabi ng mga nomination, no, para sa liderato ng ating Kongreso. May panahon para dyan, pero ito panahon muna ng ating mga kababayan. At nananawagan ako na magtulungan muna kami. Kasi sa uli din naman, kung ano mang klaseng liderato ang ipapakita nila dito sa log ng Kongreso at dito sa nakikita ng ating mga kababayan, ito rin 'yung lideratong rerespetuhin nila. Ah, sa dumana pag-panahon, no, nakita niyo naman 'yung trust ratings na Kongreso napakataas. At ito'y dahil na rin sa trabaho ng bawat indibidwal, bawat committed chairman, ang trabaho namin sa budget. At huwag din sana masayang, 'yung institusyon ng Kongreso, 'yung lahat na nagawa niya at nakamit niya na ipagpatuli pa rin, baga mat may politika tayo, may konting kaguluhan sa liderato, ipakita pa rin natin na ang Kongreso to nagtatrabaho, hindi para sa kanyang sarili, kundi para sa sambayan ng Pilipino. Maraming salamat po.
Minority Leader Benia Bante.
Ay, ah, okay, akala ko din ako magsasalita. Anyway, lahat naman ng sinabi ng ating mga congressman na kasama rito eh, pinapaniwalaan ko. I mean, ah, sa minority po, hindi manggagaling, ako i-assure ko po sa majority, hindi manggagaling ang pagugulo sa minority sapagkat nagkakaisa po kami na dapat talaga i-approve ang budget. Sa akin lang po, kung may mangguguluman, eh mahiyahan naman sila sa taong bayan at mahiyahan naman sila sa ating pangulo na walang ibang iniiisip kundi bigyan po ng budget ang gobyerno para makapagtrabaho na tayo at maibigay po natin dapat maibigay sa taong bayan. 'Yun lang po ang sa amin.
Well, as far as the liberal part is concerned, there are members of the liberal from the, who belongs to the minority and who belongs to the majority. Pero lahat po kami nagkakaisa, dapat dito sa pinatawag ng pangulo, special session, dapat budget. Pag-aralan po natin mabuti ang budget, ipasa natin, pagkatapos po, sa kanila 'yung iba, sa, 'yung mga ibang bagay, sa kanila lang natin 'yung pag-usapan.
Kong LP Joe Varsaga.
Budget muna bago politika. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you and see you again next time. Thank you.
Marami salamat, minority. Folks, ma- mics.
Yes.
PD, salamat sa inyo, salamat. Have a good weekend.
Mahiyahan naman sila.